If you put it that way, it's a potential redesign of standing committees over the school board and also advisory, citizen advisory committees to the school board. I want to start with, you know, board just standing committees first. I'm hoping to be able to spend no more than 35 to 40 minutes so that we can get to the next one and, and leave about 10 minutes for next steps. And I hope that we can reach some sort of consensus on both topics by the end of the work session today. With that, I, we, you see up there at the last work, last work session, we had a couple of options from a governance committee. And I did ask all the members to think about those and think about all the options and tweaks on those, those couple of options, you know, brought to you. With that, I'm going to have my dear colleague Megan McLaughlin first.
I, I wasn't necessarily wanting to have to speak first to the topic. I wanted to ask Mr. Moon if we could maybe consider doing the citizen advisory committee structure first because we're missing several colleagues. And I think that it's really important that as many of our board members are here for the conversation about the standing committees. So I was hoping we could start first.
Okay, if there's no objection, I can do that as well, even though both of them are equally important, but we'll do. If there's no objection, we'll go to advisory committees again. I don't want to spend more than 35 minutes so that we can do the other, the other topic. So I got to switch here in my own head to go to, all right. I think at the last meeting, my recollection is that most of us were able to share the feedback from their respective advisory committees. But there were some of you who have not quite had a chance to talk with the respective advisory committees. And if you want to give us a little more feedback from advisory committees, now is the time to do that. Any, any board member? Okay, if not, I'm going to open the floor for any, any brave soul to speak first. Ms. McLaughlin.
Yes, I, I would just like to suggest that those of us here can weigh in on, I think, one of the, the more important issues, which is because it relates to all of the advisory committees, which is the size. You know, right now they do vary, but one of the things that, serving on governance that we had talked about was trying to make the committees smaller and able to really engage in more robust conversation with one another. And since they advise the board and we do still receive advice and support from Dr. Garza and her administration, it might help reduce workload on employees who've been serving on the advisory committee, but also enable our citizen appointees to bring their perspectives and engage with one another and the recommendations that they bring to us each year. So I, I do strongly support if the input that we've received from our other committees is that they too see a benefit of reducing membership to approximately 13. I don't think we have to be so constricting that if individual committees say that there are a few other appointees, but I think shooting to have 13 or to 15 members on an advisory committee might actually enable them to have that type of more effective work with one another. And then, Mr. Moon, I was wondering if we have sort of a draft list on where we are on the advisory committees in terms of where there are any, any that we were feeling no longer we needed or just where we're still in terms of who's going to report to the superintendent. I, I see Title I and FISAP are ones that could move, but it would be helpful to kind of get a sense of, I think, where we are in moving toward the various changes and or recommendations.
Okay, I do not have any particular recommendation from myself. I just want to hear from other board members. But before I go to Mrs. Strauss, Mrs. McLaughlin, let me ask you a question. When you said 13 to 15, you initially said 13. Did you mean to say that's basically a one each from 12 board members plus one student representative appointment? Is that what?
Yes, thank you.
So there is no, no community representatives specifically from a certain organizations or staff as members of those committees? Is, was that what you meant to say or?
Well, the reason I said 13 to 15 is because 13 would be including our student representative, which I strongly support. But then additional 15, again, as a range was saying, if there were individual committees that felt very strongly that they needed a, a citizen representative from a particular organization, I think of like MSAOC. And if they felt that having the NAACP or another organization that they wanted to make sure was consistently represented year to year, that's just one possibility for think about. The other option would be that they give us the organizations that we, the 12, could always make sure that in our appointments, we make sure those organizations are representative to the best of our ability. That's the other option. But my point, Mr. Moon, is I'd like to keep our committees as close to 13 as possible, but I don't want to disrespect our committees who might feel they need one or two more.
Okay, Mrs. Strauss.
First of all, are we talking about CTE, ACSD, and PLECA as part of these?
I think all, all the advisory committees basically.
Well, I believe that quite a few of the committees benefit tremendously from other organizations being present. CTE needs to have a lot of business and industry representation beyond school board members because they count on, on that kind of professional advice. So I think that that, I would not want to limit, I know that some of the other committees, if they are limited only to the appointees of the school board, they sometimes don't get a quorum because people don't come. Also, ACSD has a long tradition of, again, robust community advocacy groups. So on the one hand, you don't want to have committees that are too large, but I do think that a lot of, a lot of these groups benefit from longstanding community representational groups who come with professional expertise. So I, I would not want to limit all of these committees to simply those participation from people appointed by school board members. I think we would lose, those committees would lose a lot of their very important expertise that we do count on.
Ms. Hines.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I understand, we're not talking about eliminating staff from our advisory committee meetings, right?
No, we're not.
Okay.
As members.
As members, but we would still expect staff would be at the meetings advising the committee, right?
As a staff.
As staff, okay.
Ben, Mr. Press.
Well, I'm sorry, I had one other point. I, I mean, if you want me to just kind of, I, I agree for myself that the Title I and FISAP committees don't need to report to us. I have been the liaison for both of those. And I think that actually, it seems to me that they are mostly about empowering the parents to share with each other and to take ownership. And I think they don't really, don't make recommendations that we act on anyway. So I, I don't know that we need, so I think that's a good advice.
I'll go to Mr. Press first and then superintendent and then Huff. Okay, Mr. Press first.
Thank you. I want to echo sentiments of Mrs. Strauss and Mr. McLaughlin that I think that having some staff, pardon me, some community organizations present on these advisory committees offers a very valuable perspective to some of these discussions. You know, coming from Shack in a, in a previous life, I know I benefited greatly from having the professional opinion of the medical professionals we had. We had, you know, the Association of Pediatricians and, and registered nurses and, and people from the, you know, county health department. Having those professional opinions really informed our discussion. I have no issue with, you know, the board moving to a, to a 13-member committee structure where those are the 13 voting members, but I think keeping those voices in the room, perhaps as non-voting members, but as, but as participants in those discussions is very valuable. I wanted to ask, since I didn't see it in here, I'm assuming there's no change, but I wanted to, to be clear that there would be no change to the framework of appointing members to these committees. Would it still be a year-over-year appointment or would it be, you know, a point for a longer term? How, I mean, would that change in any way, shape, or form?
Oh, we have not, we have not really discussed that aspect yet. I have Dr. Garza next.
Just very quickly, I just wanted to make a point with regard to not reporting to the board. I think we could also make it clear that at any point, it doesn't preclude a group coming to the board should there be something that they're working on that would necessitate that. So it wouldn't ever, it would never, it wouldn't preclude never having that opportunity, but when it was relevant and important.
Thank you. Ms. Corbett Sanders to be followed by Ms. Huff.
Actually, Ms. Huff has before me.
Okay, Mrs. Huff.
Thanks. I just, as the current Title I liaison, they had emailed me requesting more time for the process of communicating. I'm just reading the email. They wanted to make sure, they asked all their stakeholders. So I just think what, if we're getting to a point where we are going to recommend one thing versus the other, I would like to have something, an actual proposal to bring to them just to confirm that they feel like they will still be effective. I think one of, the only thing I heard, and obviously you have a lot more experience, Ms. Hines, so I, I don't actually have an opinion either way. So I'm just trying to take what they're saying also. They were hoping that some of their recommendations were going to be more potential board action ideas, policy ideas. Sounds like that was the way their board was wanting to move. So I just want to make sure that we respect that in our decision. And I think to Dr. Garza's point, I don't know that reporting straight to superintendent would preclude that, but just to make sure that they understand that we understand what they're trying to get out and we could work with them, so.
Okay, as far as bringing to the respective advisory committees of a concrete proposal from where the board is concerned, if you want to implement the changes starting from July 1, we sort of need to come to some sort of conclusion today so that we can put it, any change will be posted as a new business, hopefully at the next meeting, and then action at the following meeting. That, of course, that gives the public, including advisory committees or committee members, opportunity to let us know what they think about the proposals.
Okay, so then I would propose that if we were going to do that, I'm happy to bring them whatever we decide today. And if they wanted to, me to offer an amendment for that, I'd be happy to do that if that's the best way to do it.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
We've spoken about this before, so I just want to urge that I am very concerned about the optics of taking the Title I parent advisory committee, which has, it's established under federal law, but also because of the sheer number of Title I schools that we have, that we would not have some sort of reporting mechanism to the full board because it is a critical piece of our service delivery model. So I would urge that if there is a decision taken by this board to not have the Title I advisory committee or any of the other citizen advisory committees reporting to the board, that we relegate the responsibility of the liaison from the school board to make a decision with that committee as to whether or not they should be reporting out to the board every year or on a specific topic so that it becomes more of a flexible approach. But I feel very strongly that is, when it comes to Title I, that we're sending a mixed message about the importance of the Title I schools and the programs by not having them report to the board. Additionally, on the makeup of the advisory committees, as written, it does not state clearly that we would, you know, I, I guess my concern on that is yet again, that people put a lot of work into the advisory committees and that, that work is invaluable, that the, I meet with the individual appointees quite often on the various subjects, but we need to, if we are replacing their reporting into the board, that we should have some sort of formalized reporting from our appointees to each of the members so that we know what is being discussed within those committees and whether there are concerns. Yet again, I'm trying to figure out what's the problem we're trying to solve.
Ms. Evans next.
Thank you. I will go down the list and, and say for Title I, I, I do believe that that is a different kind of a, a committee. It, it really is more, both FISAP and Title I, it seems to me, it's, it's people getting together, as Ms. Hines said. So I would be all right with those committees reporting to the superintendent with the understanding that the superintendent would report to us annually on, on their conclusions and their work. I also think that ACE is possibly a committee that could report to the superintendent rather than to the school board. FPAC is also a different, or it's, it's a very different advisory committee, and that was set up with, with very specific things in mind. And the appointments are different and it's overseen by a committee of this board and then the, the full board. So I think that needs to stay the way it is. I think there's a possibility for, for the human relations committee to be melded, rolled into another advisory committee. What they do tends to cross over MSAOC and Shack, so I'm not sure how we would do that, but I think there's a possibility there anyway. I think APAC needs to stay the way it is. As far as the membership, I, I agree with Mr. Press that particularly on, on Shack, I'm, I was on Shack both as an appointee and as the liaison, and that committee does benefit from having people like pediatricians on it and people from, from the field. So I think that, that's almost an essential thing for that committee. But what I would suggest is that because we don't have the membership list in front of us, I think that we should actually review the membership list rather than just, I'm trying to go by memory on some of these things, and I, I have some memory of the, of Shack, but not of all of the other committees. So I think we might want to take a look at the membership organizations and see if there's anything we wanted to revise. But for the most part, I think any member organization that's on an advisory committee now, my default position would be to say, keep them on, but we might want to review that and see if there are some organizations that no longer have an interest in, in a committee. So I, I think we should review that, but I think we should be looking, rather than just starting from the standpoint of 13 appointees, we need to start from the standpoint of where we are now. And if there's any, any organization that, that doesn't belong on a committee anymore, I think APAC needs to report to the school board. I think MSAOC needs to report to the school board. Shack needs to report to the school board. And that's all I have to say for now.
Okay, anyone who hasn't spoken yet before I do go back? Mr. Narcof ex?
I, I, I think I've been a little frustrated like throughout this whole thing. I think Ms. Corbett Sanders is, I, I think, what problem are we trying to solve here? And I think I don't have a good handle on that. So I don't have adequate, I haven't up until this point had good answers to some of the questions. I do agree with some things that my colleagues have said, so, so I will, I will go down that list. I agree we need to look at the membership list like Ms. Evans said before we make a decision because I can't, I, I, I don't have that memory either. I do think, I have also been a liaison to Title I and FISAP, and I think somehow those two can be rolled into one if, if that's what we're talking about. But I am also concerned about if the majority, maybe with the exception all, but, but those two, if we keep them as two, do not only report to the board, those are the only two that do not report to the board. I am a little concerned about the optics of that because it, it definitely sends a message that that is a, a different tier if it's not reporting to the board. I understand what that committee is, as you said, it, it's kind of a committee for those groups to get together, but if we don't have them report back to the board, because I even, having a lot of Title I schools, but I didn't always know what they needed, what, what their mission was during the year. And finally, somebody had said this, I am not as good as I used to be always at getting my liaisons, I'll be honest, to meet with them on a regular basis. So I was wondering, could there be some kind of informal, you know, like how we have the form, form where there's just like a couple of things, like what did you discuss this week? If they could, maybe we could construct something like that so quarterly, the members could report out to us as a board, like this is what we're doing, because that will give us some kind of tracking mechanism and your liaison fills that form out quarterly to you to understand, so you have a better understanding because I will be guilty as charged saying sometimes the first I heard was when, and, and that is due to our very, very busy schedule. But lots of times, we do not always follow up with our appointed liaisons. And so I think that would be helpful and that may streamline in the end the reporting structure because we will all know what, we'll have a kind of a heads up rather than, oh, this is all new information to me. So I would like to make that suggestion.
Okay, when you said appointed liaisons, you meant board member liaisons?
Yes, yes.
Not your appointees, right?
No, I meant.
Not the board member appointees?
I meant my board appointees.
Your board, okay.
Yes, yes, that's what I meant, my appointees. Whoever has a school, whoever has their appointees, every, we construct this like, you know, what was, what is your, you know, what is, you know, what, what's your charge this year? So we always remember that. What have you been working on? Where are you toward that charge? And what's your ultimate, you know, like three, three things that they can fill out literally hopefully in five, you know, five minutes. So, and that can keep us updated.
And any concerns that they're?
Or concerns, yeah.
Yeah, and that's something the individual board members, are you making, you're just suggesting individual board members to do that?
No, I'm, I'm.
Are you, are you asking board to do that?
I am asking the, who's the governance committee to make a, to make a form, to make, so, so appointees can fill that out and give it to their respective board members, even if it's twice a year. I said quarterly, it doesn't have, it's not meant to be intensive yet, it's meant to be just keeping us up and, and more informed and better.
Okay, that's for some other time, maybe not today. Okay.
Okay, well, I don't know, I might want it as the next step.
Okay, all right. Ms. Patrick?
I think I, well, I, I'm trying to figure out how we can best address the FISAP Head Start Title I. I know one of the big concerns that comes from, or one of the concerns that comes from the FISAP Head Start Committee is that their report is prepared by staff who are constantly working with them, sent to us and then sent back to staff for a report back, for a response. So I think I brought that up before. So I don't know if there's a possibility for them to be working more regularly with, under, with the superintendent because that seems to be the best flow, and then find a reporting out perhaps with the superintendent. Maybe the two committees could report together with the superintendent to the school board so that they're still reporting to us at some point during the year that makes sense. It, it does seem, I, I, I'm hearing that we want to make sure it's, they're at the same level as every other committee and respected, and if that's what we see by having them report to the school board. But at the same time, it does seem they feel like it's a little circular action that's happening between their work, the empowerment of the members, the parents and the committee, and then the formal process we have in place of reporting to the school board. So I don't know if there's another possibility for us to look at, for them to be under the superintendent, but find a different way to do, you know, once a year, report together to the school board. That would, just one possibility I'm throwing out there. And for the advisory committees, I know we're looking at membership and want to make sure that they're representing the community. And I don't know if it's at all feasible, but one thing that was asked by, by the chair of one of my committees was, is there a way for each committee to come up with the kind of representatives they feel they need on that kind of community representatives, whether they need someone with legal background, someone with health background? So the, the kind of members they're looking for, as we're looking to appoint people to the committee, is there a way that with the chairs, you know, for the next year, we could prepare recommendations for the type of appointees that would help the committee?
Okay, anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Mr. Wilson, you want to speak on it, on this one? Okay, before I do go back, I want to take maybe 30 seconds to let you know where I am on this. I'm not in keen in changing reporting structure of these committees to whether, whether we should change to superintendent versus, you know, school board. I would rather keep those as is. For HRAC, I don't mind changing that to Human Resources Advisory Committee. It could still be HRAC, but Human Resources rather than Human Relations, because HRAC is currently, what they are doing is, as someone mentioned, that there's overlap with a couple other advisory committees, but Human Resources is obviously, you know, 90% of our budget goes into paying for people. So that's, that's, that's very important. So, you know, you know, having a, that advisory committee may be very beneficial to us, our work. Membership size, obviously, you know, board has not had a really time to see a individual advisory committee's a membership, a composition at this point and who are really participating or not. I have only talked with my own advisory committee. They said basically, you know, 13 is too small, small, you know, they see the value of having some, you know, community organizations, have some representatives to serve on the committee. We can never tell what, you know, each individual, you know, school board members, you know, whom they are going to appoint, even though we give a list of organizations, we encourage board members to pick from. You know, you know, board members don't always pick from those organizations and sometimes it comes down to the last minute for amongst the board members trying to find the, you know, appointees. I, I haven't really heard from, at least from the advisory committees I used to serve as liaisons to, that composition of the membership itself was a problem. So, so, I mean, I'm not, I, I don't feel that we need to make any drastic change to the makeup at this point. And other, other reporting timeline and how the, when and how the staff will respond to the reports presented by other advisory committees, you know, as we discussed at the last, at the last full day work session, rather than having three, if it could, you know, limited to no more than two per night and give them more time. And also when they present the reports to the school board, if we could have some preliminary responses from staffs as well so that we could have some meaningful discussion at the same time, rather than having all the committees present the reports in two weeks in June, we could spread them out to, you know, June and July timeframe, that would help all of us, you know, board members, also staff as well who have to be at these meetings. So that is where I am. With that, Mrs. McLaughlin for go back.
So based on what some of the, the other board members have shared so far and, and having spent quite a bit of time in governance talking about this, I wanted to touch on maybe where we could maybe find some common ground. In terms of the 13 appointees, you know, one option is we first begin In terms of the 13 appointees, you know, one option is we first begin with circulating the list of professional organizations or groups that the committees themselves have said, "These are essential." And it's, you know, toward the end of every year, before we go to a point for the next year, that committee would have their recommendation saying, you know, this is, we want to ensure that board members do their best to have these organizations comprised of the appointees if possible. And where it's not, then the committee, when they re, they reorganize again in September, they could certainly then say, "In addition to the, you know, 13 or 15 of us, we would like to add the following appointees to it." I mean, if we're going to honor their work, then in the end, they can let us know if they think they're still missing some people each year. My concern again is, we know the 13 of us, when you include Ben Press, our student representative, getting 13 voices of this board to even just be able to engage with each other on any given subject. Then you add in our superintendent, and then you add in any staff, it's a lot. And often, we don't even get a chance to have robust conversations with each other, it's just a lot of, you make your point and you move on. And so, that's a driving point of why trying to make these committees, imagine now 35 people sitting around a table, and some of our advisory committees have up to 35 people on them. It's unwieldy. Ms. Strauss pointed to getting to a quorum. Ms. Strauss, it'd be my understanding that the quorum is based on the number of the whole. So if they become smaller, the absence of a few, still, they can easily still reach quorum if people are now feeling like their time is being used wisely. I don't know about you guys, but I have been very engaged with my committee appointees, and they've all spoken to the fact that the larger the committee is, the more people start to wonder if it's a good use of their time. And they stop, they stop wondering if it's worth going. So you have a vicious cycle that starts with that. The other thing is that many of our appointees are professionals. My appointee to Shaq happens to have a PhD in nursing, is a nurse practitioner, and absolutely understands the healthcare field. So I think that we are very fortunate to live in a county of a million people who are extremely talented and knowledgeable, and I don't have a fear that this professional board of 12 would be able to be very conscientious of making sure that our appointees are the very best to serve on this advisory committee. But again, if you give the advisory committee then the opportunity to look at where their holes are, they could certainly then say to their, their school board liaison, "We want to go ahead and add in three more people," and, or from these three organizations. And I see that being a way of addressing some of the concerns people have talked about today. Ms. Kofax, I absolutely support what you're describing, just a very easy, straightforward summary form that we could give to our appointees that might make it more comfortable for them to email us and say, "Hey, wanted to give you an update on where we are." So I, I support that as well, I'm very thankful that my appointees reach out to me because we are so busy and I rely on them often to give me a heads up. In terms of professional opinions and staff, you know, I, part of the reason governance brought forward this notion of bringing, making our committees smaller and what role staff would play is, Dr. Garza did share with us, you know, her staff is stretched, we've got over 10 advisory committees, and we've got our standing committees, and, you know, as a result, it's a lot for staff. And I know in talking to my appointees, their goal is to bring their perspective from, you know, their professional experiences to provide additional insight to the board. And instead, it's been like additional board, you know, additional staff work. Dr. Garza's people are there, they're presenting, they're answering questions, they're, oftentimes, again, because of the way we've done our appointees, we've got principals and, and other director level positions all there. They're already trying to do Dr. Garza's work, and then they're coming and doing our advisory committee work. And that's another reason why I think there's a lot of overlap. And if, you know, Dr. Garza wants to speak to this, I really envision that just like we have one school board liaison, you have one staff liaison, and that is more than sufficient. And then the staff liaison can talk to the committee chairs to say, "Hey, I'd like to invite this staff to be there to present any information that's relevant to the committee." But right now, there just seems to be a lot of staff at a lot of these meetings, and I, I don't know that that benefits the staff. And I also think it again presents the challenge of, you've got sometimes around the table, multiple staff who may want to speak about their own point of view, but they've got other colleagues who are there, and you don't want to say anything that's contrary to maybe one department versus another, contrary to maybe where the system is right now. It's really not built well, and I don't think it serves well that, you know, we've, we've got these committees that are supposed to give us independent advice. And so I, I think it's beneficial from staff workload, and it's also benefit, beneficial for these advisory committees to just serve in their role to advise. And then we get to take their input, and we get to talk with Dr. Garza, her staff get to review their recommendations and provide input. So I don't see the need to be having them all in the same room for nine to 12 months. And Mr. Press, maybe you can even speak more to that as well on a go back. So, to your other points that you're asking, Mr. Moon, about timing and things, I support the other things that you laid out, that spreading them out between June and July, and, well, essentially everything that's in the bullet there, having the staff response there alongside the presentation rather than waiting to three to four months. And I, I think that's going to put us in a better light, but I really encourage us to please consider, governance spent a lot of time on this because I don't think the status quo is serving us as well. I don't mind if enough, a majority of the colleagues really want the existing committees to all report to us together. But I, I'm still comfortable looking at ACE, FISAP, and Title I reporting to Dr. Garza because I see them as very much focused on the operations, and it might make more sense to have that direct connection to the superintendent. And finally, Mr. Moon, thank you for mentioning the human relations and the suggestion that governance had brought up, that is, we would convert it to a human resources. We're the third largest employer in the Commonwealth of Virginia, I think it makes a lot of sense. Dr. Garza, I think, would benefit from our being able to engage with her on things like benefits and salaries and pension, and all the things that are wrapped up in having an organization of 25,000 people. So, thank you, Mr. Moon.
Okay, I want you to spend more than 35 to 40 minutes, time is almost up, but I have some other board members on the go back list, and then I want to start asking some whether, whether we can, you know, bring to conclusions on this. And I have Ms. Evans and Ms. Corbin Sanders on my go back list.
So, starting with the reporting requirement, I do agree that it should be staggered and each of the committees that report to the board should have their own time as much as possible. So I would even extend it more and stagger it perhaps over May, June, and July, and incorporate at least some of these, maybe the, you know, committees with major reports could be incorporated into our monthly work sessions as well, we wouldn't have to. So I think if we, if we had some of them at our May, June, and July monthly work session to, to give their reports, that would help us. And then I agree that no more than two should be going together. Back to Title I, I guess I hear some disagreement on that, and I feel there are a lot of issues at our high need schools. This committee, as it's currently structured, though, we don't have appointees on that, right? We, we don't, we do not appoint. If we wanted this to be a true advisory committee on high need schools, I think we would need to reconstitute it and give it a different mission. So, Mr. Moon, let me ask you this, and I don't know if, I haven't let you know that I was going to ask this, so I don't know if you have this at your fingertips, but does the, the law determine the membership of this committee? Or does it just say that it has to be a Title I parent advisory committee?
Because we receive federal funds, we are required to have that committee, and they do require certain membership. So, that we are required to have that committee, so if you were to do something different, we would still have to have this one.
Would, does the membership, could we expand the membership from where it is? Or does the, the law determine exactly what the membership is?
It probably could be some expansion of it. I just wanted to point out, if you change the mission of it, we would still have to have the Title I.
Okay.
So that the membership probably you have, you know, you can add to it, and I'm sure the representation would meet the standard.
I have, I have not really looked into that, but my gut feeling is that because of the grant,
it's the federal.
Title I, probably the members have to come from those Title I schools.
Right, yes.
You know, whoever you want to appoint.
Yes, and then we don't appoint, so I guess what I'm thinking is, as it's currently constituted, it makes more sense to report to the superintendent, to my mind, because of what it is and who they are and what they're doing. If we, and I guess that's, that would be my question then moving forward, if we were to expand it and ask them to do certain things, I mean, there's, this board can use advice on certain things having to do with high need schools. We don't actually get that from this committee. We don't actually go to them and say, "What do you think about differentiated compensation for Title I?", right? We don't do that. We don't ask them that.
No, but remember, you have control over their charges every year.
Okay.
So I was, later I was going to suggest, as we think about the charges, let's be really careful that we're maybe aligning those to critical work that we have going on, like our strategic plan.
Right.
I think they would also feel like they're adding more value if it's directly aligned with work that we have underway.
Well, so if we were to do that, if we were to give them a, a charge that looked at some of the issues this board was really grappling with, and if we were able to expand the membership, that to me would look different. And then I think that committee should report to the, the board, if we were, if we could do that and if we were to do that. So, I'm wrapping my mind around turning the HRAC into Human Resources rather than Human Relations. I guess I would have to think about what we'd, we'd ask that committee to do. It would be very different than what we ask them to do now, even though the initials would be the same.
Okay, same name, different person, Corbin Sanders?
Dr. Garza, thank you so much for mentioning the linkage to the charges, to the strategic plan. I think that's something that we as a board should be very disciplined in, in using that approach for all of our advisory committee work, is that as we look at a charge, we should question ourselves, "How does this move us forward in having a more robust and informed discussion on each part of the strategic plan?" So I think that's a positive, and we should include that. I was also going to offer, you know, we are constantly worried about the workloads of all of our staff. And so I, I do support having a more streamlined participation in the advisory committees from staff so that if you do have the staff liaison who then just works within the system to say, "This month, this is who we need here, this month, we need this group," or something different. So it's much more strategic use of our resources within our staff time. I would also offer to my colleague, Dr., or Mrs. Steranak Kofax, and to the rest of the board, a structure that I was required to use when I reported out to, to the chairman of the Board of Verizon. He had something called the five and five, and it should take no more than five minutes to fill out, no more than five minutes to read, and no more than five items on the, on the report. And I was required to provide that to the chairman on a weekly basis, but I certainly think we can use a similar format, and I'll, I'll give it to you, which we could use for our advisory committee appointees. And then last but not least, I do welcome the concept of being more strategic in the use of our Title I committee, if we could have them reporting to the board. My question is, the current makeup are parents of Title I students. So some of us have Title I schools in our districts, quite a few of them. And so it might be easier for us to appoint a Title I parent. But we can certainly, if there's other, so that way the, the committee doesn't have to get overly big because we can utilize that strategy in who we.
Okay, I have Ms. Hoff, Dr. Garza, and Ms. Strauss, and I want to, I'm not taking any more board member after that. Ms. Hoff?
So if we do change HRAC to Human Resources, would we also change the structure of who is in that advisory committee? Because right now, it's very similar at MSAOC, so would we revamp what our appointees would look like? Okay, that was a clarifying question I had. And then this is just a newbie question, when do we decide on the charges and give those out? Okay.
Usually do, usually do in July timeframe.
Okay.
Dr. Garza?
Yes, mine will be very quick. I, I do want everyone to, I really appreciate the concern with the staff time needed to support these advisory committees, but I just want you to know that that's not the reason we're having a conversation. We will, and our staff will continue to do whatever's needed to support, whatever the board wants to consider. I think a primary goal that was, when Dan Stork originally brought this up, it was because we wanted to maybe spread them out and give them a little bit more time to, and so they feel like they're, what they're presenting and their work is valued and respected. So I think the spreading it out of these would help, be very helpful, if any way, shape, or form we can do that. I would also, just one minor thing that might help a little bit, is if we treated FPAC as a completely different, so they're not put with the same advisory committee presentations. And the only reason I suggest that is it's a different, there's different guidance with FPAC, they present several times a year. So maybe we could treat them differently than the regular advisory committees, so it takes one off, whatever nights or however we arrange this, so something just to, to think about.
Okay, Mrs. Strauss will be the very last one.
Thank you. One of the things in, when we have Title I and FISAP come to us, it is good for the board to get to talk about and to listen to stories that the parents tell because often they are very powerful. And if we have them reporting only to the superintendent, we lose that, that link. So I very much appreciate what those parents have to say when they come to us. The other, in years past, when we've looked at representation for our other committees, we have gone to the committees themselves and said, "Are there different organizations you want to have, et cetera?" So I, I, as I said before, I feel it's very, very important that the, the established community organizations continue to be represented on those committees, go back to the committees themselves. Because often, they will say, "This organization is no longer existing, this is the one we want to have people from." And so as a board, we have approved sort of the list of organizations that will be represented.
Okay, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Just a clarifying point, I'm sorry, Dr. Garza had stepped away. What's concerning me is that I don't think people understand, each committee can vary, but right now, some of our appointees to these advisory committees are coming from staff and are then other staff. So it's one thing that school board members want to appoint somebody, and then it's another thing that we want to have community organizations, and I think all of that makes sense. These are citizen advisory committees. But I want to make sure our colleagues all understand, we have staff appointing staff whose then voices are on the table bringing, you know, this, this staff perspective too. And that's where we already have a staff liaison to bring staff perspective and input. And so my goal was to, again, streamline the number, but I don't know why we right now have regional superintendents appointing people to our advisory committees, and whatever staff appointments come from it. These are our working committees, and I, I really hope people are thinking about what that means. Ms. Strauss, thanks for providing that clarity from your perspective. You're correct, community organizations are one thing, but we've got a lot of staff serving on these because they're being appointed by staff.
Okay, on the size of a membership, I, my take based upon conversation today is this, that obviously each school board member will appoint one, along with a student representative, that's 13. And I would like to request a respective advisory committees to think about what other than school board appointees, what community organizations should have some voice on their, on their, on their committees? And also ask a superintendent about what's the member should be serving on those committees? And probably the size of, size, you know, size and composition of the advisory committee need to be revisited. And put that issue aside for the time being. I think that require a little more, a, a, you know, analysis and collaboration with advisory committees along with the superintendent and, and have a further discussion by the board. Maybe sometime soon, but I don't think we can reach that conclusion today of what each, you know, advisory committee, you know, how many members should have and who should be serving on et cetera. So, uh, you know, hopefully, you know, if you can find time with your advisory committees and, and talk with them one more time and come back soon.
I was gonna make a recommendation. If, if this works, maybe we could add to each committee's charge for the next year that they do that analysis for themselves and then, so any changes wouldn't happen now. But we would get their thoughtful response about how many members they need and what the makeup should be. It's just my thought.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I guess I, I appreciate what Ms. Hines is saying, but again, I think the challenge is if we right now continue the way we're going and our regional superintendents are appointing people and we've got a number of staff who are serving as members, how awkward is that? Putting that on our advisory committee, many of them who are our appointees, to have a conversation in the room saying, we really prefer that this be a citizen and, you know, a citizen advisory committee as it's named, rather than a combination of staff and citizen voices. And so.
You think we can do this? Maybe ask a superintendent as far as staff member, staff members on the advisory committees is concerned, that superintendents recommend, make a recommendation to the board as to which staff should be serving on those committees? So that she will know, you know, which is, you know, which staff members provide more benefit, you know, should provide service on the committees and which, you know, staff members could be dispensed with.
No, I think what I'm trying to understand is we have one school board liaison and we have one staff liaison. And beyond that, since we call them citizen advisory committees, I don't know why we have staff serving as members on the committee. We've got a staff liaison who can help provide any advice and or, you know, have people come. We're trying to make these committees again, have the ability to engage with one another, discuss the issues. And the more voices around the table really does complicate that.
And there's probably the, probably M S A O C probably has the most. Would you agree with that? There's quite a number of staff that are actual, like principals or on the list.
And Shaq has a lot too.
Shaq has a lot too, so.
Okay, okay, let's, let's do this. Okay, on the, because we need to, we cannot, you know, continue this on without being able to see the end. So let's do this on the size and composition. First is Mrs. McLaughlin's, whether, let's see whether Mrs. McLaughlin's proposal has a majority support, which is thirteen appointees and one staff liaison to serve as a member. And some community organizations may be recommended by a, a advisory committee. Is that?
Yes.
The committee, okay. So as far as the staff members is concerned, is going to be one. And other staff could be, could be invited to the meetings as needed. Okay. If, if, if that has the majority support, those in favor of that, raise your hand.
I'm sorry, I'm just voting for one voting staff member.
One voting staff member.
Other staff members as, so that's all I'm voting on right now.
That's all you are voting. Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Okay.
With A P A C, we don't have the staff liaison as a voting member. We have voting members that are from, so I was a little confused with what just got put on the table because all of a sudden now we have a voting member that wasn't voting before. And why don't we say maximum one staff member vote?
No, it's supposed to be that they serve, it's one liaison per committee. Ms. Corbett Sanders is correct. I'm not advocating that staff become voting members. They're there to advise the committee, which is to advise the board. So Chairman Moon, or Ms. Moon, I thought you were saying that we would have, you're having one staff liaison per committee.
I'm gonna ask Mrs. McLaughlin, another opportunity to state your proposal. That's your proposal, not mine.
Yes, thank you. So as it's written above, that we would have the membership comprised of thirteen appointees by twelve board members and the student representative. There would be one, uh, the, the board would then expand the size depending on the needs of the committee and those recommendations would come from the committee. We would have one staff liaison, just as we have one school board member, but there isn't staff voting on it. And I don't know that they have, other than being members, members in the past.
Okay, so that's the proposal. Ms. Evans?
So under your proposal, what would happen to the various organizations that are currently members?
Again, as it says up there, the board may expand the size depending on the needs. So the committee.
So we're voting today to cut out all of the organizations unless we put them back in? Cause I'm not going to support that.
Well, we don't have to, we don't have, we're, we're basically asking them, as Mr. Moon said, to bring their recommendations to us in June, saying if there's any committees that, that, or community organizations, they want to make sure are on their list. I mean, it's this, I, I don't know why we think we have to study it a whole nother year.
So I'm just gonna say, I, I think this is doing it backwards then, uh, because I do think that we should keep the organizations where they are and, and tell the committees, and we have reviewed the specific organizations. I'm not ready to go now to, to reduce that. And then so un- under the committees where we currently have, for example, elementary school principals or high school principals, then they, they would be removed by this as well, it sounds like too. All right, okay. Well, I understand it better now. Thank you.
I guess, Mr. Moon, I'm a little confused. We've been talking about this since March. I mean, we brought this to our colleagues and, and with two work sessions now that we've spent on it. And we ca- keep, governance especially kept asking you all, go back and find out what your committees want. I, I'm not comfortable that now we're voting and whatever's going to come to us in the June. I'd be more comfortable if we're gonna come back one more time and you guys can say to us, we want the advisory committees to include these thirteen appointees plus any of the other community organizations that the committee recommends. I mean, because I'm, I could end up having one of my appointees being from one of the community organizations you're talking about. But to just punt on this and not change it, I'm worried.
Mrs. McLaughlin, we had your proposal as written above. That's what we are discussing. We had a couple more board members. Ms. Hines and Ms. Sternak Kofax.
Yeah, just again, I, I don't think this is a bad idea, but it's May and I think that, and I agree with you, we've been talking about it and I feel like we haven't made a lot of progress. And personally, I think that's because we need the committees themselves. They're very different, um, each from the other, and I think we need to give them some time to talk about this. And that's why I would still think, let's not rush and do it this year, but ask the committees to take a look at it and advise us next year, so.
Ms. Sternak Kofax?
That was gonna be my advocacy, Ms. Hines is, or, cause you had, now stated that twice. So I think that, because I think what Ms. Evans said, it's a little bit, and I understand your frustration, Ms. McLaughlin, but when I kind of started my statements today, I'm like, I feel like we're still not at the place where we can make this decision in a thoughtful manner, even though we've had two work sessions on it. And I think that is, you succinctly put it, Ms. Hines, what the missing piece is. I don't think we have had the time or the opportunity to go back and truly discuss this. I know I haven't done that with my committee appointees. And I think to do it thoughtfully is the best way. So, Mr. Moon, I guess the, then the second proposal, if you don't vote for Ms. McLaughlin's would be, Ms. McLaughlin's with Ms. Hines's addendum, which is just adding extra time to, to the, the proposal to vet it.
Since we, we should be making some, some decisions, uh, I'm gonna ask Mrs. McLaughlin for the one last time to state her proposal so that we can vote on it.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to just simplify this based on what I'm hearing around the table. If it's that people want to take my recommended proposal and we're gonna actually send this to the committees as a part of their charge for next year, I mean, at least for goodness sakes, we move the ball. So I, I, I'm fine with the amended proposals stated by Ms. Hines and Ms. Kofax, which is, that's what we're gonna do, but we're gonna ask the committees to examine that and make the recommendation.
I think, I think the bottom clerk would really appreciate if you can say it in, in, in sentences, complete sentences.
Okay, the proposal is to request the school board citizen advisory committee members to review their membership such that it would reduce, be reduced to thirteen appointees. Then include the twelve board members and student representative appointments. The board may expand the size of the membership as recommended by the individual committees.
Okay, so initial decision is to reduce it to thirteen? And then board may expand. Is that your proposal?
Right, but the first part of what I said is we're gonna send it back to our advisory committees to say, we're, this is the recommendation. It, it would be the thirteen plus any other additional appointments that they recommend. So it could be they recommend other community organizations be represented. They could recommend staff be there if they wanted to. But it's the point that we're gonna, we're looking at this size plus any other recommendations they, as each individual committee, feel they need to do their work.
Right, but I think it's important that the change actually not happen for the next year, for the next academic year, that they would, that their advisory committees would bring back to the board recommendations and the change would be for the following.
I'd said it would be their charge. It's their charge, meaning that's what they're working on next year.
Okay.
I, I also, but just using the word reduce still says we are looking to reduce. And I think that's sending the wrong message, so I'm not gonna be voting for this.
Okay, I'll be supporting this as a compromise so that we can move forward. We are basically asking a, a advisory committees with a guidance from school board member to look at and come back with their recommendations for the following year, not upcoming year. Okay?
But that's different than what Ms. McLaughlin just said.
No, I actually, Ms. Evans, I specifically said it would be part of their charge for next year. So if that's their charge and they have to review it and make a recommendation next year.
For the next year.
Does it still have the word reduce in it?
If that gets more support, yes.
Okay, I'm not done. Okay, Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Can I try it? Restructure the membership. Restructure the citizen advisory committee memberships, membership to include thirteen appointed members by twelve board members and the student representatives. Any additional membership shall be contingent upon the recommendations provided by the committees as a result of their, of this secondary charge for the calendar year 2016, 2017. The appointees to be representative of communities they are trying to reach. Does that work? Correct. That's why I said the char- contingent upon the recommendations.
Okay, I'm just gonna change the calendar to a school year.
Okay.
School year. With that said, let's see whether we have a majority support for that proposal. Raise your hand if you support that as recited by Ms. Corbett Sanders so eloquently. Okay, that, that carries. Now, the next one is, let's do a simpler ones first. Simpler ones first. Having the reports presented to the board, uh, I think there was one proposal from Ms. Evans, May, even May, June, July. Spread them out rather than doing, trying to do everything in June.
And include some in our regular work sessions was another piece.
As, that was. Okay.
I, I appreciate what Ms. Evans is saying. I think June and July is reasonable. May is when we're working on our budget. Look at what May is already. I, I don't think we're gonna be in a good place to have committee recommendation work sessions on top of what we're already doing in May.
Okay.
If I could, we actually, um, we, we did take a look at this in chairs the other day, looking at the calendar going out. And we actually did try to spread them out so that we were able to add the Shaq. This is our, our proposal anyways, to add Shaq to after our May twenty sixth regular meeting because we don't have a lot on the agenda for that night. I think that was. Wellness po- okay, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm reading my not so great notes here. But I think basically we are already figuring out how to spread them out so we don't have more than two at a time. May, yeah, and we're adding, um, so we're already kind of figured out how to squeeze it into, um.
Okay, I, they shouldn't be that, they shouldn't be that difficult. Chair and vice chair in the chairless meeting consultation with the superintendent to figure out the calendar. And just, this will be the guidance basically.
But, but Mr. Moon, I think the guidance ideally, I think what I was trying to capture is I would want to guide the chair and vice chair, whoever they are, at any given year, that it would be in May after the budget. Which I think Ms. Hines are saying, but I don't want to, to have this coming, A, before the budget and B, I already hear from our advisory committees, they race to get it, their work done through the month of May. So if you now have May reporting, they're gonna be cut short even up to two to three months compared to other committees, depending on when they come, so.
Okay, so now there are two competing, competing proposals. Uh, let's see whether we can somehow find the consensus, whether to spread them at May, June, July at the chair and, chair discretion or June and July. Okay, any other proposals other than those two? If not, let's see whether we can have one.
Mr. Moon, my proposal was in May after the budget. It wasn't ruling out the last week in May.
May after the budget. All right, those, I'm gonna do the first one, May, June, July. And then the second one is May after budget adoption and June and July. Okay.
Is, is the only difference when we're gonna have, when we're gonna send the charge, it's not gonna make a difference on when it's implemented?
Since it's charged, this is the.
This is a report, report to the board. Okay, those in favor of May, June, July at the chair of discretion, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay, I think that's the majority. We'll go, you know, May, June, July at the chair of discretion. And also not to exceed two reports per meeting. Or it could be one, or it could be two, but not to exceed two. Those in favor of that, raise your hand. Okay, that's done. And, and also when the advisory committees present the reports, include staff's preliminary responses when those reports are presented, not the, not the full responses, but preliminary responses of the staffs also to be presented. Yes.
Just a quick question. Um, we've run that by staff to make sure that's not an unreasonable request?
Superintendent, you have a comment on that? Because a lot of times advisory committees work with the staff and crafting reports, so it's already included. So all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's the majority. Okay, now, now it comes down to a couple of things. First of all, changing H R A C to another H R A C with a different name, Human Relations Advisory Committee to Human Resources Advisory Committees. Obviously, it's gonna be a different focus. All those in favor of that? Yes.
Yeah, I would also recommend as part of that, that it would be sent to governance to develop then the, a recommendation for the actual description, the mission, the charge or whatever that our other committee is already having. Cause we wouldn't just be changing the name, we'd be changing the overall purpose of the committee that needs to be defined.
So voting for this, I would be voting to do away with the current H R A C starting now. We no longer have H R A C, we dissolve it, it goes away, right? And then sending to governance. And then sending to governance a job to develop a human relations, a human resources advisory committee. Not to create one, but really to develop what it is. So we wouldn't have that advisory committee at all for the next year, is that right?
That's the proposal.
Okay, okay.
Proposal is to remove Human Relations Advisory Committee as an advisory committee to the school board, and create Human Resources Advisory Committee, and direct the governance committee to develop.
Sorry, quick question. So if governance goes back and talks about this, does the board still have the opportunity to say, no, actually, we don't want a Human Resources Advisory Committee?
I would think so, because we're bringing you a draft, and then as the board looks at it and sees what shape it's taken, you could all just say, I don't think that's what we were aiming for.
I mean, any proposal that will go back to the school board, which is subject to the board's consent, or, or board's lack of a consent, will kill the proposal. Okay, Ms. Evans?
Who's the liaison to HRAC now?
Ms. Huff.
Have, have we passed by them the idea that their committee would disappear? And have they weighed in to?
I don't know how to put it that way.
This at all? I mean, I mean, this is a big deal to, to eliminate an advisory.
I have talked to the chair, and I've also talked to some individuals, and they said that they would want to see exactly what the proposal was, but that they could understand that there is overlap between what HRAC as a relations committee is now doing with MSAOC, and it seems to make sense.
So I guess I, I would have a little bit more comfort with this if we made clear that we value their work. And, you know, it's not that we don't value their work, but that we would like to see the same work done through other committees.
And I do think that they understood that when I spoke with them, because they were reiterating the fact that they also saw the duplicity in it. Not that they saw it as less, what they're doing now isn't important, but they could see that that would be good progress to.
I see.
Turn this to more of a human resource.
And as long as they are aware that we're thinking about melding this into other committees, and as long as, as it's, it's clear that we are melding what they do into other committees, not stopping doing that.
Yeah, which is why earlier, even about Title I, I had said, I think it's good for, personally, I feel it'd be good to have something in writing to show them, so that if they weren't in the end, that I, as their liaison, would be willing to create an amendment or do whatever is needed.
Ms. Evans, I have done. Then I, I have us three board members, Corvett Sanders, Mrs. McLaughlin, and I have Mrs. Strauss.
Along those lines, I was actually going to suggest to modify this a bit to say, charge the government, governance committee to develop a proposal for consolidating HRAC with MSAOC to, to ensure we more effectively serve the needs and have the governance committee develop a proposal for Human Relation, Human Resources Committee. So, rather than, and, and any change to the HRAC, given, I presume that they've been working all year long for a report, for us to say they're, they're dismantled as of today.
No, they'd be dismantled at the end of this.
Well, that's not what we said, though. That's why I want to make sure.
Oh, this, this. This will have to come to the regular board meeting for a vote, any change. This is just a proposal from this, and then put it as an action, you know, new business, and then vote. And then, in a public, we'll have an opportunity to comment on those. And those proposals are subject to change. We're not, we're not making ultimate final decision today.
I would just suggest that we need to have a proposal on how you, if we could just have a proposal on how HRAC would be melded into MSAOC, or, you know, that we don't say we eliminate it, but rather that we are consolidating the two. I think sends a better message than gone.
Okay, I have a Ms. Corvett Sanders, Mrs. McLaughlin, you are done, and Mrs. McLaughlin, Mrs. Strauss, and I have a Ms. Hines. Okay, that work by the governance committee is going to take some time. Okay, Mrs. Mc.
Yeah, so I think, Ms. Corvett Sanders, you've helped us a lot, because as I understand, having served as HRAC liaison before, and this was a couple of years ago, and I had that very observation, it looked so much like the work of MSAOC. And what I learned is, that's because MSAOC came out of HRAC. So their work is very similar, because the whole point of human relations was to look at the fact that we have a diverse community. Then they wanted to specialize with a focus on achievement, which is why then they became an outgrowth. MSAOC is an outgrowth of HRAC, that's the history there. So if we do consolidate them again, I don't see that as problematic. I actually do think that certainly, we would never tell a committee that worked all year, we don't need your charge report, we don't need to hear from you. This point is going forward for the school year 2016, 17, as, as Mr. Moon pointed out. So I really do hope we will move forward on this proposal, that we will allow HRAC work and MSAOC, they've always been one from the other anyway. But it's important that we go ahead and develop a Human Resources Committee. And so I, I think you've outlined it well.
Okay, Mrs. Strauss, and Ms. Hines, and that's it.
Okay, I didn't know that where this was going was to basically collapse the two committees. I have, I, I am not sure that I support that. The, I could see doing, if we want to do Human Resources, but then I would see, then would they be working on things like pay, benefits? Right now, we also, they also help develop our calendar, which is very helpful. So would the Human Resources be more of a, a place for community and the various professional organizations, teach professional organizations, to talk about issues that are important to all employees? Minority student achievement oversight, I always assumed, was really more talking about student achievement, gaps in student achievement. So I would see Human Resources as having a very different focus. Not that, you know, there may be some overlap. But I guess that would be, I didn't realize that that was kind of where this discussion was going, because if the focus is really on minority student achievement, then it needs to say that, as opposed to a lot of other issues dealing with employees and everybody getting along in schools, yada, yada.
Okay, employees will be, if we have Human Resources Committee, will come under probably the Human Resources as opposed to MSAOC.
Right, that's. Right, that, but that's what I'm hearing is.
I think what I'm hearing from is that, that HRAC, current HRAC will be collapsed to, into MSAOC. They'll be sort of consolidated to.
But their focus then would be.
No, we're creating a new Human Resources Committee.
Yes, I get that.
That will stand alone. And then the work that H, that Human Relations has been doing, just to make sure that MSAOC is robust. And if there was anything outside of MSAOC work that has to do with achievement gap that H, Human Relations used to be doing, because one came from the other anyway. But nothing's going to change the fact that Human Resources, brand-new created committee, will be all on its own. It's not being collapsed with MSAOC.
So there would still be an MSAOC committee?
Correct.
Okay, that was my.
Called MSAOC.
Ms. Hines will be the, Ms. Hines will be the really last one on this one.
So, yeah, just maybe some of the same clarity. I think I worry a little bit about collapsing the two committees together. I would rather say that we're going to be collapsing their work, but I think what I'm worried about is if they think that they actually have to create a 60-person committee, then we're in trouble, right? So it's more that MSAOC will take over the work of HRAC. So I'm not sure I like the collapsing language, unless we're talking about the work itself. And then also, on a Human Resources Advisory Committee, I'm not sold that we need it. So I need it to be very clear that this board is asking governance to describe it and propose it, okay?
That's why I said consolidate, develop a proposal.
Okay, so, Ms. Hines, could you state, could you state your counterproposal?
Okay, well, the original proposal was to.
To eliminate current HRAC and create new Human Resources Advisory Committee. There was an original proposal.
So I could say at the end of this school year, right, at the end of the current year, that current HRAC will cease to exist, that we will ask governance to, over the next year, develop a proposal for a Human Resources Advisory Committee, and also develop a proposal for joining the work of the current HRAC into the work of MSAOC.
Madam Clerk, do you have that? Because I don't type that fast.
That makes sense.
Okay. Ms. Evans?
I would just ask the author of the proposal if you feel that it would, we should also include the possibility of, of some of that work going to SHAC.
Sure, I think, yes. So let's, let's add to task governance with the, the job of figuring out, what, what, not figuring out, realigning the work of HRAC into other existing advisory committees. How's that?
Yeah, that's good.
Thank you, good luck to the next governance committee, folks. With that, let me, let me see whether there's a majority support for Ms. Hines's proposal, because I'll be supporting that. Okay? Okay, that's the majority. All right, now, on the advisory committees, a, basically, there are two proposals on the reporting, Title I and FISA, and also ACE to report to the superintendent versus keep those reporting, reporting mechanism to the school board as is. There seem to be just basically two proposals. Okay, and I want to reach a conclusion on this discussion too. So those in favor of changing Title I, FISA, and ACE, report to the superintendent, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, those who want to keep as is, raise your hand. Do you, how many members do we have? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. We had four, four, three, three members missing. They don't have a hand?
Mr. Moon, should we divide it up by committee?
Okay, we'll do, we'll do one at a time.
I'm saying, should we divide it up by, by each committee, each advisory?
We'll do, we'll do one at a time.
Sorry, Mr. Moon, do we decide that if they report to the superintendent, there is still a report?
You know, board can do whatever it wants to do, whenever it wants to. If it wants to bring the whole committee to report multiple times, they can, board can do, board can do that, okay? There has been a request to do one at a time. Title I to superintendent, raise your hand. To a school board, raise your hand. I give up.
Mr. Moon, if, if there's no support for a change, that means that we don't change.
Okay, let's, since we've been doing this, let's do it one more time. A FISA, FISA to superintendent, raise your hand. One, two, three, six, that's the majority. ACE to the superintendent, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, that's, that's the majority. Okay, so that will be the main motion, that will be the main motion. That's going to be the, a, a new business, and then action to be followed at the second meeting in June. Absolutely. Okay, Madam Chair, I have used up all my time. It's either we don't discuss standing committee, potential redesign of standing committees, or you give, you give me more time to have that discussion. I'm going to leave that to you, Madam Chair. You, you control the whole agenda.
Yeah, so let me just put it out there. We can either continue now, or we can tack it on to the end of the day. So why don't, let's see, sort of, because how much time? This, I mean, I think that could take another hour easily. Do you think, Mr. Moon?
The first one took 80 minutes. I want it that to take 35 minutes.
Okay, so how about we have three possibilities? One, we continue now, two, we continue at the end of the day, or three, we put it off to another work session. Thoughts? Another day, right, yeah. All right, let's hear thoughts, yeah, Megan?
So based on what we encountered with the citizen advisory committee, I, I think it would be really important if we put this back on to a different work session with the instruction that, please, my goodness, everybody, start talking to each other. So when we come back to the work session, we've got a greater comfort level on where each other is on our own standing committees. The governance has worked on this endlessly, and we really want the work that we did, that you asked us to do, to have some benefit. And I think this is to benefit the board, obviously. So if we could, I think, go ahead and postpone, and, but, I guess Chairman Hines, my, my preference is, we will still have the goal of approving this by the end of July before we go into August recess.
Okay, so I'll take a vote on just putting it off to another work session. And I would advise that if governance committee members have time between now and then to make calls, if you already have, I don't know, but just to help board members think and talk about this. Mr. Moon, did you?
One, you know, one comment on the timeline is, we generally make the, a, not advisor, standing committee appointments at the fir, second meeting, second meeting in July. And so we need to have this thing all done, you know, prior to the second meeting, so that you, chair and vice chair can have enough time to think about whom to appoint.
Okay.
With that.
Right, okay. Show of hands for moving this off to another work session. One, two, three, four, five, six, okay, we'll do that then, thank you. So next up on our work session?
You see how efficient this governance committee discussion has been?
You've taken some tough tasks, governance, so thank you. All right, then we have Mrs. Schultz and Mrs. Huff to do special services work session, and then we do have lunch after that. It's not on our agenda, but we have lunch at 12:30. Two, two minute, three minute break? Mr. Moon, do we need to do next steps for the work session we just had? Ms.
I, I think, I don't think I did a next step. I mean, there was things that we voted on.
No next steps.
Yeah, there's no next step.
Thank you.